Okay, thank you, sorry.
I like that notice. Yeah, so, uh, welcome. We'd like to call the meeting to order of the Kitata County Public Hospital District Number One. Board of Commissioners, this is our special meeting, this is our December meeting. First item is we have oath of office of Erica Levenow and Matt Holtman. So congratulations on winning the election. Well, I'm gonna just do this and then you guys will repeat. So I'll say a few words and you repeat, and we'll just do them both at the same time. So I then state your name.
I.
Okay, do affirm that I'm a citizen of the United States of America.
Do affirm that I'm a citizen of the United States of America.
Erica, this is difficult.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and law of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will do, and will, to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully diligently.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully diligently.
And impartially perform the duties of, of the office of Board of Commissioner.
Impartially.
Impartially perform the duties.
Duties of the office of Commissioner.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Board of Commissioner.
Board of Commissioners.
For Kitata County Public Hospital District Number One.
For Kitata County Public Hospital District Number One.
And and for Kitata County.
And and for Kitata County.
Washington as such duties are prescribed by law.
Washington as such duties are prescribed by.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
All right, you're official.
Hey, thank you.
That was different with all the cutouts.
Yeah.
So with that, congratulations, Matt and Erica, it'll be a privilege to serve again for a number of years. We also have, uh, it's, it's January, so we have change in leadership. So it's been an honor to serve these last two years as President of Board. I remember last year thinking the term was only one year and thinking, man, this is cool, I'm done. But it was, there was a second year to it. So, uh, but our new president is Erica Levenow and Matt Holtman is Vice President and then Terry Clark is, uh, the Secretary. So I'll just turn it over to Erica, if that's how we can do that.
Thanks, Bob. All right, y'all poke me with a stick if I mess up here, okay? Moving right. What was that?
A virtual stick. Manny Weed has something to say though.
Yes.
Manny, you're muted.
Do you want a roll call?
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Okay, um, Erica Levenow.
Present.
Bob Davis.
Present.
Terry Clark.
Present.
Matt Altman.
Present.
John Ward.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Scott Olander.
Here.
Carrie Barr.
Here.
Jeff Yamada.
Here.
Andy Olson.
Here.
Dr. Martin.
Here.
Amanda Scott.
Here.
Michelle World.
Here.
Dr. O'Brien.
Here.
Ron Erlacher.
Here.
Jason Adler.
Here.
Then is there anyone else that's on that I missed?
Tricia Sennick is on.
Thank you.
All right, thanks all. Good to have us all together even though we're virtual. Hopefully everyone's staying safe out there. So moving along, approval of the agenda. Before I ask for a motion on that, um, it looks like there's some technical difficulties with the provider spotlight and I've been asked to have that deferred, um, until another meeting.
And, um, I would also, I believe we're asking for the operating budget to be approved this meeting and that does not appear as an action item. Can we add that?
Where would we like to add that?
I think under finance.
Under finance, okay.
Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, please.
Great, can I get a move, a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved by Matt?
I'll second.
Second by John? All, all in favor?
Hi.
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 All opposed? All right, that passes. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Motion to pass the consent agenda.
I, I have a question first, Erica.
Yes.
So, uh, Julie, on page four of the packet, page two of the minutes, did we get an answer on that mass discrepancy, the three and the one, not, not totaling five?
I am sorry, I did not have a chance to follow up with that. Mandy, we were trying to remember, we know Erica did not have an opportunity to, um, review the files last month. So she, uh, abstained from voting on the, the medical staff files. But we only, only had three voting members, so I apologize for that, John. Um, I was supposed to go back and watch the meeting and see if that should be four and one. For some reason, I thought three and one was right, but.
But I, I know we had, it says all five members attended the meeting, Erica abstained, but only three people voted in favor, so we're just missing one commissioner.
Right.
According to these notes, so I just wanted to get that corrected before we put it into the record.
Mandy, do you see what he's talking about, it's, uh.
Yeah, I can make that change and then post those with that, with that amendment.
Can we, can we confirm that everyone but Erica did vote yes then? Is that possible to approve or do we have to go back and look at the videotape to make this move forward?
I think we could just confirm.
Yeah, like I voted yes, I know that.
I did too.
I did too.
And this is Terry, I voted yes too.
Okay.
Oh yeah, it should just be four and one then, so.
Sorry about that, John, I was supposed to check on that.
Oh, you've had a few things on your mind, no worry at all. So with that, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
So, yeah, one thing, uh, one more change there, Mandy. I started the meeting not Erica on that page. Erica. So page three.
Right, thanks, Mandy. Yes, I was tuning in from my COVID isolation at home.
Yeah, I think, Mandy, you just copied that over from the last minutes.
Hi.
And when Bob was, Bob was up, yeah.
So, uh, but I'll second with that change also.
Sorry, Bob, did you say you were seconding?
Yeah, with, with the changes.
Two changes.
All right, so I have a motion by John and a second by Bob, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? I think that was four of you that voted I, um, motion carries. Public comment, I don't have the script for this, um.
Please. I don't see any public on.
Public on.
And there's, I'm alone on the second floor of the hospital, so I don't think there's public in the mezzanine either, so.
Okay, um, if public is here and we've missed you, please wave your hand or raise your hand in the Zoom. Then we can move on to presentations, Mandy.
Well, um, I have to say I'm a little ill-prepared myself personally because we did, uh, have some meetings changed around at the, uh, about strategy here at the end, but it, I, I don't feel particularly ill-prepared in that this is, this is work that you as the board and your administrative leaders have been doing for, for six months. And so this is just really a presentation of, um, the, the different strategy areas. Um, and I think the format was going to be that the board and each leader of each area would be presenting them to each other. Do I have that right, Julie and Michelle?
That's correct. So again, we're, we, you're seeing the entire strategic plan for the first time. I think you've been up to your elbows in the, the area that you're sponsoring. But this is the whole thing, so we wanted to read through it tonight with the staff and the board sponsors. We also are looking to schedule a work session, a Zoom work session. So the board members can push back on things, ask about, uh, more detail before, so we're looking for that work session, between this meeting and the meeting of the 27th, when we would be asking you to actually adopt it.
Right, and then from there, uh, there would be further work done by the leaders to massage the, the operational work of, uh, or operationalize the strategic work, um, and get into the nitty gritty as well as the administrative team, um, working on how to report how we're doing as we go along over the next three years. So what will be actual measures, um, or reports, what will that look like and what cadence will that come, uh, to the board for reporting? So should we just kick off with access here?
Let's get going, so access. And I believe Rhonda is on this, uh, committee and Rhonda is out of power and internet up in Upper County. So she is our canary in the coal mine for, for what's going on in Upper County and she just lost power probably an hour ago, so.
Boy, Upper County's had it rough with that. So Bob, um, do we agree I'm gonna do one and three on here? Remind me what you've decided.
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, so we've been really pleased with the progress we've been making with the access strategy. Got a great team, um, coming up with some, um, great, um, fine tuning to it. And so access, protect and sustain access to primary care in Kitata County and ensure residents have timely access to needed specialty care and ancillary services. And, um, ideal state, we recognize the dignity of every individual and help them reach their highest potential for health during all stages of life. Um, we really wanted to encompass, um, the breadth and of diversity in our community. No matter how small a percentage of representation might be there, we want to make sure everybody feels welcome no matter what and that they'll all receive top quality care. Here at KVH, and so how we get there, we identify and implement new services targeting the needs of special populations. We partner with Kitata County Schools, CWU, and Adult Living Facilities to meet the needs of our community.
We wanted to be intentional in providing needed services in our community, saddle sheeting and utilizing to evaluate the feasibility of new service lines. Whether we should be providing those service lines or supporting those service lines, you know, elsewhere in the community. I think we've done an amazing job, you know, I mean, last few years and, um, just kind of moving forward, seeing what the needs of the community are.
Patients have timely access to the needed services. How we get there, Kitata County has the right amount of primary care, specialty care, and ancillary services. KVH has an environment that maximizes employee fulfillment and retention. This speaks to staffing and recognizing, um, the correct amount of service lines to, to match our community needs. As well as the staffing partnering with our staff to create a, um, positive work environment, um, to retain and recruit.
We anticipate the resources we will need to serve the community. We anticipate and prepare for growth, particularly in Upper County. Yeah, I just think the county is gonna be growing a lot over the next few years. We have the appropriate technology to assist our staff and patients. Have the appropriate space to provide the necessary care. We grow our workforce through strategic partnerships.
Could we be entertaining questions or just marching through each of the strategies at this time?
I have a question, cease the march. Did, is, was there some particular area that changes a lot from the previous? Like, did you change the emphasis of anything or, or add something in particular that we should notice from the previous strategic plan? Just curious about.
One item that stands out to me is extra emphasis on diversity and inclusion, just recognizing, um, that there might be, um, niches of our community that we haven't necessarily recognized and then we need to be looking for those differences, that diversity and being very conscious and intentional about how we meet those needs.
Yeah, and I think the other thing, it's probably mentioned later, um, is retention. So not just provider retention, but staff retention, so trying to not only recruit, but that which was the emphasis of our last strategic plan, but how do we, how do we have retention? How do we keep folks, um, for long, uh, longer periods? And I think that's down, down on the page.
Okay, thanks.
Do we still have an opportunity to make small verbiage changes to this?
Is that better suited for our, um, Zoom meeting that we'll be having later this month, or should we be doing that now?
That was kind of my thinking. So that, um, uh, some of these, I, there's a theme here of, um, connecting the work between the strategies as well as, so we're actually looking for duplication in some of this, um, and then also hammering home that workforce piece through this. So, uh, it was sort of my vision for the, the work session that that would be where the wordsmithing would be going on and, and, you know, really making sure that the strategies marry up.
I'm good with that.
All right, thank you.
Financial sustainability.
There we go.
All right, do you want me to take this one?
Do we still have Scott on?
He's muted.
I'm on if you want, I can.
Yep. Go for it.
Financial, financial sustainability, didn't, we didn't change too much, the two ideal states, maintain a positive operating margin and strong cash reserves. How we get there, we regularly review our operational performance and maintain access to capital all times. That being, um, anticipated capital from operations, so having a strong operating margin and then maintaining a good balance sheet where we are attractive to lenders and can go to debt at any time. Ideal state, we are adaptive and responsive in order to grow our market share. To how we get there, we have the necessary financial resiliency to develop new programs and resources to allow them to grow organically without stressing the organization's stability. We have a vision to assess future healthcare demand throughout Kitata County and the ability to purchase the necessary resources to meet the demand. I think that one kind of aligns with the access and predicting the future, future growth in the county and what the needs are to stay with the demand. We have financial means to train, hire, grow, and sustain our workforce necessary to meet the healthcare needs of Kitata County. Again, kind of connected with access and the others to, uh, develop a strong workforce that wants to stay with KVH for a long time and invest in our workforce. So we can just have the, the best employees care for our awesome community.
Thank you, Jason, I got somehow muted out.
All right, is it partnerships next?
I did, uh, one thing I wanted to mention here, um, and this is, I talked about this with Julie and John when we had our, our, um, uh, gender review. This relates to patient experience and financial sustainability, but I was sort of thinking that we ought to kind of investigate the out-of-pocket cost to patients. And the can, you know, so, uh, we are doing well and I know that we have to sort of save money for a rainy day and for fluctuations with COVID and everything. But it may be something maybe in the strategic plan to look into, uh, we wouldn't have to make any big promises, but just sort of start thinking about, um, cost to patients, anyway.
Matt, I would just say that there's, there's some legislation going on regarding, um, uncompensated care and charity care that is, uh, going to increase, um, the amount of, uh, the, the, are, we provide, uh, our charity based on the federal poverty level and it's going to increase substantially the threshold. Uh, that, so there's going to be a significant number of, uh, additional patients that are eligible for, uh, financial assistance. I don't know if that's directly related to what you're talking about, you know, because, because of, people do have, um, significantly out-of-pocket expenses related to care that we provide for them.
I mean, that's, that's certainly a big part of it, and one of the things I like about thinking about this is it relates to financial sustainability, patient experience, and since you guys now have, you know, underserved populations and things in the access part, it, it's, uh, one issue that kind of crosses several of those, uh, different priorities. So I was, you know, maybe someplace in there, I'm not sure under which one it would, it would be. Uh, we could think about, uh, charity care, but, but also just more generally about, um, out of cau, out-of-pocket cost to patients. And again, we wouldn't have to make any big promises or talk about, uh, uh, or do it, say anything more specific, but it might just be something to start thinking about, anyway.
Yeah, I don't.
Matt, there. Okay, Bob.
Well, yeah, I just, I, I don't really like the word charity care, right? And then, uh, I know those numbers going up quite a bit, but when is that supposed to take, take place, Scott?
It's, uh, this legislative session, I don't know when the effective date will be, but it's, uh, uh, the Attorney General, uh, Ferguson has got something proposed and it, it will, uh, the starting threshold will be at least 300% of the federal poverty level and go from 300 to 400%, um, potentially.
So it's at under 200% now?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Matt, I was just gonna say, you're gonna see a lot, yeah, I work on the customer experience. And so that can very, be a very nice tie-in with financial ability as we dig into that.
Great, thanks, Michelle. Yeah, I mean, I think it might be good to have something in there. It wouldn't have to be one of our ideal state, you know, things, we wouldn't have to put anything specific on it, but somewhere in here would be nice to start thinking about. Since, uh, thinking about the out-of, out-of-pocket cost to patients, not only for under, you know, people who are, you know, who are, who are eligible for the, for the assistance, but also for, um, just more generally. Anyway, it's, I'm not sure where we'd put it, because I think it sort of crosses three of these at least. But it might be nice to, to at least start thinking about that issue.
Well, and I'm really excited about the crossover, so, um, I actually calling them out in strategic work, almost duplicating it from strategy to strategy. I think that's sort of the signal that our strategic planning and our strategic work has become more sophisticated, that we're tying it all together, so.
So Julie, because I know that, uh, since it does cross boundaries, it's, it, it might sort of easily fall through the cracks or something. But do you think, uh, would you mind or, or thinking about someone who might do it, just think of, of a how we get there sort of thing? The, along these lines?
Yes, and I, I did not, I have not, I don't think laid eyes on Scott since you and I met. But yeah, we, we talked about the impact specifically on our patients because of our rural health reimbursement. Those things that have worked in our favor also burden our patients with a higher out-of-pocket. So, um, I think there's some really, really creative work to be done there, and yes, I, I I won't drop the ball again, so.
Well, you, I, you didn't drop the ball, but, uh, but I appreciate it, uh, we can maybe get it in there before, uh, before the one we approve and we can talk about it more if you want during our work session, so, thank you.
Yeah, I, I like that, Matt. We, we talk about the out-of, out-of-pocket costs all the time when we talk about charge master increases or even, uh, yesterday, one of yesterday's meetings about hospitalists. Out-of-pocket costs are greatly impacted if a patient's classified as inpatient part A or outpatient part B. So those are also, you know, we're always talking about it, so I think it's important to be in there. We were always talking about that and Medicaid has no out-of-pocket cost share.
Well, that's good, I mean, if it picks out, uh, some work that you're already doing, I think that would be, that would be nice to capture in the strategic plan, so, great, thank you, Jason. Okay, partnerships and collaboration, this is my group. We're brimming with, uh, amazing ideas, so if any of you need any help from, uh, the, well, I'll say it, the best group that's, that's working on this right now, uh, I'm sure we would be happy to, to farm out, uh, some, some intelligence to you guys. All right. So, uh, first, one of the things that, that we're doing with partnerships and collaboration is really emphasizing the employee. Because, uh, previously in the strategic plan, we were talking a lot about partnerships in the community, but one of the things we wanted to emphasize was, um, was our internal talent, right? So, uh, we wanted to make sure that, uh, KVH team and partners are aligned with and role model KVH culture, strategy, and values. So, um, this is, we basically want to make sure that the strategic plan gets down to, um, to, you know, the people working on the ground and, and, and interacting with the patient and interacting with people inside and outside the organization. Uh, KVH staff take an active role in growth and development at KVH, so this is not a top-down process of, uh, of moving the organization forward. But this is something that can happen, um, you know, in, in all sorts of different areas. Uh, KVH promotes communication and teamwork to improve health outcomes, because ultimately it's about improving health outcomes. And so, uh, if this is something that can be, uh, can be promoted with a lot of, uh, you know, with connections between different departments and things, uh, we want to do that. Uh, and KVH anticipates our workforce needs to support the necessary services in our community, and this is another one of those ways where partnerships and collaboration sort of, uh, crosses over with access and things, and, um, you know, some of the, some of the how we get there stuff has to do with how we're developing our own workforce and moving people forward, uh, internally. So it's not just about hiring from without, but also developing people within. Amanda, did you have, or, or Jeff or Vicky, you guys have anything to add to, to any of this?
Uh, I had a couple, just though, um, Jeff, uh, you know, obvious retention, um, is built into this, staff retention. And as Matt, uh, talked about with our partnership, um, that would be with contract then as well, so if they are, um, providing services within KVH, um, they are a part of KVH and, um, also represent, uh, and emulate the cultures and the values of KVH, right, so.
Amanda or Vicky, anything to add?
No, I don't think so yet, yeah. Yeah, I think you got it spot on, thanks.
All right, thanks a lot, guys, and I appreciate all the work that, uh, you guys did in this. I know that I, I speak for the rest of the board in, um, being very grateful for all the work you guys do and then you come to us and you sort of present, um, you know, the results of all this hard work that you're doing behind the scenes, uh, I mean, it's behind the scenes for us, so. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that we really appreciate all that work you're doing and, and it doesn't go sort of unnoticed and we don't take it for granted, so thank you guys for doing all that work.
Thanks for pointing that out, Matt, I echo that completely.
Looks good.
Thank you. Customer experience?
Hi, this is Terry, that would be me. So, uh, uh, these are the four legs of the KVH customer experience healthcare stool, and they are all very strong. KVH will create diversity, equality, inclusion in our workforce and care delivery systems. Uh, and, uh, that, that's very important because our community has a lot of diversity in it, and so having caregivers with diversity is really the ideal state. Uh, KVH will provide excellent personal care. We will provide our workforce, uh, the training tools to create, we will provide our patients the care that they need, uh, and accessible, high-quality. We will provide our patients the care that they need and accessible, high quality. Reliability, support, the work of our community partners. And as we were talking about some of the other ideal states, we are in this community and we are partnerships with lots and lots of people. And K V H will promote health and wellbeing in our community. We will partner with the community agencies. That's one thing we're seeing that we're going to do with the healthcare review that we, we had presented to us at our last meeting of what needs to be done in this community. We'll partner with the appropriate agencies to address a social and upstream factors. And we have already done that very well because the strategic command was a kind of turned Kinnett County into the Goldilocks zone. When the COVID virus started kicking in. And then we will work to create sustainability, collaborate, community, health and improve system. Now, one thing that I did talk to somebody about, I talked to Mandy about the Quapi, and this is something I see very important. That the ideal state is make sure that we understand that expectations and satisfactions are different. I had a community member contact, talk to me about a week and a half ago. And she was disappointed that she didn't get the Ciprofloxacin for her urinary tract infection. Because the last time she got it, two times she got it, it cured it right up. But she got a different antibiotic. And I explained to her that the problem with antibiotics, especially Ciprofloxacin is it can cause E. coli to not to be against antibiotic and it won't work. And they gave her a different antibiotic. And once she understood why she got a different antibiotic, her satisfaction was very high. Even though her expectations were a little different. So I think it's always important that we think about what is the patient's expecting from me? And making sure that we cross that and deal with the satisfaction. Anyway, so the four legs of, of the, of this stool are very strong and we will support anybody who sits on it. Thank you. Michelle or Carrie, do you have anything you want to add to me, to this?
Yeah, you did great, Carrie. The only thing I would add is just kind of on some of the background on those ideal states, one and four. Number one, where we talk about the diversity, equity and conclusion, we're really looking at the AHA roadmap on that. WISHA has some equity coalitions already put together and we're looking at some of the ideas of AHA. So we don't have to recreate the wheel on that. And additionally, down on the last ideal state of promoting health and wellbeing in the community. Like Terry said, we are really partnering, K H N just completed the child ship that you guys will be adopting tonight. And a lot of these ideas come directly from that. Like Julie said, it's really nice to see the work that we've been doing and continue to do tying directly into strategy. It really gives purpose to everything and makes what we're doing here tonight meaningful, not just this document that you guys are approving. So I, I want to thank you all for the work and your involvement in this process.
So I, I want to talk about nuts and bolts for just a second here because we're using a tool called Smart Sheets to track this and, and to kind of build it internally and anybody can take over for me at any time because I, I, I think Michelle and Mandy are the ones really working this, but it is a great tool. I think, you know, we struggled for three years with how do we track and, and our progress. It doesn't particularly lend itself well to presentation. So the question is, and, and if I'm wrong, jump in. How do we get the detailed work to the board so that they can look at it and, and have some time to explore it between now and the, the workshop? I'm looking at the unblinking Mandy and Michelle.
Julie, do you want me to pull up the smart sheet so they see what it looks like? Would that at all be helpful?
Erica, is that?
I would like to see it. Yes, please.
And I think one of the things we're struggling with is how do we keep track of the details of the work and kind of where it's going and make sure that we're meeting these high level goals and also get the board members that information, right? It's so they, they know what's happening. But without overwhelming the board with details, not that you can't handle it, but that is that really necessary? So.
Is it possible to share this in a read only format so that board members could look at it and digest it at their own pace?
Absolutely.
We, we can, we can download. If we're talking smart sheets, we can bound this into an Excel format, for example. So you can look at it, just so you know what you're looking at, nuts and bolts wise. And I'm just using access as an example. The purpose of the strategy here, you're always going to see online too. And then if we fold everything up, these, they should all be gray, but these top level items that you're looking at, that I'm messing around with right now that I shouldn't be, these top level items are the ideal state. And wherever you see a plus, that then goes down into the, okay, how are we going to get there? What, what are some of our tactics? And as we build this out as a team, I'm seeing, you'll see that there are some that are even further, further details. On, and they, they may even be getting into what are we measuring? And how are we measuring it? And then on a practical day to day sense, say, I'm just going to pick one out here on identifying and implementing new services, targeting the needs. There may be a specific project associated with that. So that in and of itself would have its own smart sheet that would then feed back to this line to say where we are on the progress of it. So the details won't be here. But the progress summary will. Does that on a high level make sense of what you'd be looking at?
It does to me. I'm, the, the projects, did you say those are linked to the strategy? They could be clicked on and, and viewed?
Um, for us, they could be. You know, if we're sharing the Excel spreadsheet, you're just going to get a static file of, of what we're doing. Now, Beth's team has a great, he uses this on a daily basis and has created some dashboards to help him do project management and things like that. And so ultimately, I think one of the questions we're asking you guys here is at what level you're wanting to see items and what are you wanting to see?
Yeah, one of, one of the options is we can share the smart sheets and they can be read only. That's easy. I mean, that's just a click away. So it's just, I'm more of how much detail you want to see. I think the goal in future for this is to have each of these roll up into its own dashboard, right? With an overall overarching strategy that for a, a kind of a client's view of what's going on too. So.
What, I mean, I've been to these, you know, a lot of these meetings where they're talking about how to, how to, you know, run board meetings and things. I, I kind of like Erica's idea. What if we just had access to these things and we could just dive down as deep as we wanted to, and that would be like homework. You guys wouldn't be expected to present all this stuff. But we could drill down as much as we wanted if we had access to this stuff. And then we could come to the board meetings with specific questions for you. But you wouldn't be expected to review it all. Would something like that work?
Or, or even like if we get, we, if we could get it in a read only file, then when we meet for our special meeting, we could have like a breakout. Like go to our different groups and just kind of touch base and see if there's questions.
We can absolutely.
Yeah. So the little share on the top, on the top right. Michelle can share all this out to you and you, you would have access to it through the website, smart sheet website. So that's easy.
Okay. I like that idea.
Okay, that's doable. What you saw tonight on the presentation, I took the project summary, strategy purposes and ideal states. And I did cut some of that wording down on those ideal states, getting to ultimately, you know, so we've got our working document and then we also have the, what we're publishing for the next three years to public and staff and things like that. And I have gone back into the smart sheet to do the word spitting on what you saw today. So I will send out what you saw today. So when we're in that work group section, you, you will have the ability to see that as well as the detail when we share out the smart sheet. Does that make sense?
Yep.
It does.
And I, I just would like to mention too, one thing about the smart sheets is you can lock cells. So once you have approved certain, you know, the language or there are certain things that this isn't going to change. Where the details of some of the project work might change, we can lock those cells so that they're not getting edited as we go.
And then also you see the column where it really connects it to the other strategies. So it says access is going to lock arms on this second, on we recognize the dignity, we're going to lock arms with customer experience on that one. Finance is, is going to be in the room. They're going to work together on the, we anticipate the resources we need. So that's kind of how we tried to signal the overlap.
This looks like a really powerful tool. It's impressive. I like it.
And Matt, to your earlier question about things falling through the cracks, I think that tool really doesn't distribute responsibility. It shows that they're shared involvement. So if anything, I think it's more resilient.
Great.
So how would you like to go about organizing a time for the workshop? Do you want Mandy, we to send out a doodle poll or what's the best way, Erica, to move forward with this?
I'm a big fan of doodles. I think that that kind of cuts to the chase and maybe saves the organizer a lot of headache.
Let's just do an all nighter tonight. Right on here. Never leave.
Mandy, you, you were on mute, Matt. Sorry.
All right.
So Mandy, you got that assignment? All right. Um, the other question, Hospital District Two. Once this is hopefully approved on January 27th, we would, Hospital District Two, as you see in my report, has executed on a big piece of the site plan and strategic plan that they had up there. So they are going to be undertaking a refresh of their street strategic plan as well. They would like to meet with Hospital District One. So you don't have to answer the question tonight, but do you want that to be 10 commissioners or two and two commissioners? And it would be a great opportunity for Hospital District One to go see the new ambulance station in Cleveland. So.
I can't remember the last time all of us got together. Erica, did you have an idea about this?
Oh, I was just going to ask whether we wanted to talk about that now, or is this something we want to email about later? I don't know if we're ready to discuss it now. I mean, I'm.
I, I just wanted to get you thinking about it and what you wanted the format of the meeting to be like. But I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't recommend that we formulate it until you've approved the strategic plan.
Sounds good. All right. Are there any more comments or questions about our strategic plan presentation? All right, let's move on to reports and dashboards, starting with quality and Mandy.
Oh, it cut out. I, I couldn't hear you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was just making sure I wasn't getting glitchy. So I have my report. There has been some very busy things with COVID employee health going on, but I think first and foremost, we have the Quapi plan that I think Matt or Terry might want to kind of tee up for them, but we'll be asking for approval of the proposed 2022 Quapi plan. And have the dashboard measures for you.
So Mandy, I'll, I'll talk briefly about this, but maybe you could just fill in for a second. The process by which this has happened, right? So you have Quapi stands for quality assurance and performance improvement. Do I have that right?
Quality assessment.
Quality assessment. Sorry. Quality assessment. And basically it's about you know, it's about improving services and what happens is Mandy, if I understand this correctly, you go to all the different departments and, and they have ideas for what they want to accomplish. And it eventually all gets into the Quapi plan. There's feedback. There's, there's a huge process where where people are talking to each other. Eventually it comes to the Q I council. We talk about it. We sort of give some feedback and some, some suggestions. And then it comes back to the quality improvement council. We talk about it some more. It gets floated by the, the board. So the whole board had a chance to look at it and provide some feedback. And then, so the idea is there, people have been working on this for a long time. And it's been reviewed by a couple of different parties, a couple of different times. And people have had a chance to look at it and provide feedback. Mandy, did I miss anything in that process?
No, I think you've, you've got it correct. I, I will say, yeah, this year we use smart sheets for this process as well. And I think it worked really well for just it's been a busy couple of years and I think it helped our leaders streamline this process a little bit with their leaders and have that kind of rapid approval process with their leaders and for our leaders to give the feedback. So Julie even was putting comments in through smart sheets to give people feedback about, you know, is this strategic enough or there's not enough detail here? So I think it was to me, an even more dynamic process than it's even been in years past, which is kind of amazing considering we're still in the middle of the pandemic. So.
And one of the really neat things about it is each one of these initiatives relates back to the, to the strategic plan and a specific part of the strategic plan and talks about the values that it's, that it promotes. So not only is it a testament to the, to all the work that's being done, but it shows how the strategic plan helps guide people's people's work. So I mean, I think it's a really, it's another one of these things where we get 12 pages, but there, I don't know how many hours worth of work from people. It's gone into this and then it guides people for the future. So it's a really important document and, and really is you know, it's, it's a, it's just a concise thing for us to, to look at, but it represents a whole lot of work on the part of a whole lot of people. Anyway, the, the Q I council has reviewed this and approved it to recommend to the board that it, that it be approved. You guys have hopefully had a chance to look at it. Do you guys have any questions for, I, I mean, Terry, Terry, you have anything to add to, to any of this?
No, the Quapi plan was very, very good. And your description about it was excellent. And if I added something else, I would just probably tear your description apart. I will not do that.
All right. Thanks, Terry. Any other questions or anything for Mandy or for me or for Terry? Terry and I are the. Oh, go ahead. No, it's all right.
Just, just that, um, one of the things that we consider too, as we're doing the Quapi normally, but also in the midst of a pandemic is that some of this work might not be wrapped up in one year. So a lot of these plans you will see. It's not that nothing was done, but it is a continuation because we're, we're making progress and, but there's still work to be done. So you'll see that in, you, you may recognize quite a few of these from previous years.
And an amazing amount of work, not pandemic related, actually was done as we went through this list. It was like, wow. You know, the clinics tackle chronic care and, you know, patient centered medical homes and it was an amazing amount of work.
But yeah, I, I, it's just thorough and it, it covers new service lines. It, it works on our old service lines. It you know, expands, you know, compliance type stuff that we need to be watching a little closer with the new service. I mean, it just covers everything. So I, you know, you can tell.
how much effort and work's gone into this. So good job. Yeah. Do we need a motion? Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the Quapi plan. We do. Are there any other questions? John, did you have a question or anything?
No, I just would, you know, what Bob just said, it's clear, a lot of work went into it. It's very thorough. It's very helpful for me to see all the different departments and divisions, what they're thinking about, what they're working on. So no, I kudos to everyone that put on all that effort. And so, yeah, no, great job.
Okay, yeah, so the QI council recommends approval to the board. So yeah, Erica, if you want to call.
Well, we've got a motion from Bob. Do we have a second?
All second.
Second from John, all approve. Say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you all who are involved in this. This is as my fellow commissioners were saying, this is a tremendous amount of work. And yes, in in a few really meaningful pages, really helpful as a board member to have this reference to see what we're working on. Often I feel detached, especially with COVID and being on Zoom. And this is just a really great way to connect to the work that's being done. So thank you all very much.
Thank you all for your support and and our directors appreciate it. And it's really their their incredible work. So. I, so I do have, I think in my report, I talked about how CDC was likely going to make some changes related to COVID. And and they did. There's been a lot that's happened in in a few weeks since I sent this report in. And a lot of it was dependent, not just on like an employee health point of view. So there was a lot of work that that was done between Julie and admin team, incident command, to talk about these new COVID infection and isolation and exposure quarantine guidance is specifically for healthcare personnel. It now has different restrictions based on conventional contingency or crisis staffing levels. And so that was what some of the work was was determining where is KVH at? And and, you know, how is that determination going to be given to the employee health team? So we know what level we're working off of at a given time. And then also it hadn't yet been adopted by the State Department of Health and our local health jurisdiction and that that has been adopted now. And, you know, just even today, evaluating and changing and looking at our staffing levels to these new isolation and quarantine standards. So if anybody has any questions about those new protocols, I'm happy to talk about them. We have implemented them from our Nicole, Anna and I when we're doing our employee health calls. Didn't know if anyone had any questions about that.
Mandy, do I understand correctly that this, that this might vary between departments of the hospital depending on what the status is in each department? Or would this affect the organization as a whole as far as crisis or not?
It could. Right now, it's we're, it's for all, but there are, there are, there could be times where, for example, the emergency department is in crisis, but like the quality office is not, right? So so there may be some, but but right now we're, we're on one level together.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we have received record numbers of employee health calls. So staff calling in for testing, for isolation, being positive. It's been a very, very busy two weeks for for Anna and Nicole and I, as as well as everyone in the organization. But this is our little sliver of it. And that's all I have about that. If there's any questions about the dashboard, too, sorry.
Something I'm really struggling with is, so we are in contingency staffing and we're also in contingency for supplies. We are unconventional for space. So if, when we talk about being in crisis for staffing, that is not crisis standards of care. And the state of Washington has been very, very clear about that. We, if it, and today it is incident command due to the weather. I'll talk about that a little bit later. We did in fact declare that we were in crisis staffing. That doesn't mean it's crisis standards of care, but it does adjust our ability. And, you know, one of the things we're very clear about, nobody's going to be dragged back to work. We do not want sick symptomatic people working. This gives us more latitude, but we have our own policies and we have coworkers and patients to protect and that will continue to be front and center.
There any other questions or comments for Mandy? Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Julie, Chief Executive Officer report.
Yeah, there are a couple of things I'd like to cover. The first, and Mandy Weed, did, did you electronically send out the chat chip?
Again.
Okay, thank you. So the plan, you know, last month you had an opportunity to hear from KCHN, who we engaged to do the community health needs assessment and the community health improvement plan. They gave you an overview of it. You received today more detail and they did a tremendous amount of work and it was very good work. But it is, it's a, it's a more of a public health perspective. So I I don't want you to think that you were, we were asking you to absorb 157 different slides at one time. You got the message from KCHN that we needed delivered. Public health, I believe, is on a five year cycle that they have to do community health needs assessment. As a not-for-profit hospital, so in addition to being a hospital district, we're also a not-for-profit hospital and we are required every three years, Michelle, holler if I'm wrong, to do a community health needs assessment and community health improvement plan that is on our website and goes to the IRS with our 990. Am I correct, Michelle?
You're correct.
Okay, so we're off cycle a little bit with public health. So in two years, when they need to update theirs, it'll be a bigger, more public effort and we'll be involved in that as well. So right now, this is kind of our a refresh for us. If you are comfortable with it, I would appreciate an approval of the Community Health Needs Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan that was presented last month in summary, sort of an executive summary. And then you you have the entire presentation to tonight.
There a motion for approval of the chat chip?
So moved.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Second by Matt. Any, any discussion before we vote? All, excuse me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One other thing before I get into the weather related emergency. We did, we were talking about staffing and the nuance of staffing and I am recommending that when you have an opportunity and it's safe to drive, that we organize a GIMBA for you to meet with our family birthplace staff. And the reason I say that is, is we were, I think Scott, this was at finance, I think we were talking about it. And we have 31 babies in December. And, you know, I I want everyone here to understand those little darlings did not come one a day. So that's not the way babies, babies arrive at the hospital. They leave us hanging for five days and then a bus full of pregnant moms show up. So our, we have a fabulous family birthplace and a staff that manages those peaks and valleys and and that flow. So I think getting to know them, it's very unique work, very stable workforce would be a great GIMBA. So if you guys would like to do that, Mandy, we won't have you sit in on a delivery or anything, but it would be an opportunity to to meet with the staff.
Thirty-four babies.
Yeah.
Thirty-four, wow.
Thirty-four. Thirty-four.
Thirty-four babies. Wow, look at that. And our New Year's baby was born at nine o'clock on New Year's Day. So, so do you guys have an interest in that?
Yes, yeah, that'll be great.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Manny.
Yeah, I'm interested too, yes.
Okay, Mandy will start getting, organizing that for you again. It may be, maybe a little bit. And I do want to talk about the weather related emergency. We did stand up incident command today. And, you know, sensitive to the fact that we're already very stressed in terms of staff and resources, our supply chain is not as stable as we would like. I'm not sure in a, you know, a pre-COVID or post-COVID pandemic year, we would have felt pushed to declare this emergency, but everything else that we're dealing with, I I think there was 100% agreement among the the folks that gathered this morning that we needed to do this. And you should have received a recap for me. We did declare crisis standards or crisis staffing. And we also canceled Thursday and Friday surgeries, elected elective surgeries. Carrie is managing the clinics. We're getting as much staff into the clinics as we can. They're fielding phone calls, but by and large, we're, we're encouraging our patients to stay home. So Carrie, you want to talk a little bit about how you're managing the ambulatory setting for us?
Yeah, you bet. So today, really, we were, because of staffing, we just didn't, we didn't have the, the folks that could see the patients. So in some cases of smaller clinics, they're closed. But for the most part, people who who don't normally answer phones, it was, it was quite a sight. We, I walked in the Family Medicine Ellensburg and there's three MAs answering phones and and handling patients. And so people were excited to jump in and and help where they could, but just staff and patients were were not interested in in kind of slotting through the snow today. So we don't blame them. We're light it, we're lighting up the schedule, lightening up the schedule for tomorrow as well, just in preparation. We've already had some staff callouts as as well as patients rescheduling.
And I think Vicky has been successful in redeploying some of the SOP staff to the emergency department and back to CCU. Is that true, Vicky? Yes, we made the decision to cancel the elective surgery to freed up that staff again, like we did when the COVID surges. So tonight, there's three additional staff working night shift. And I, we're hoping that will happen again tomorrow, just to get us through the weekend. But that's been working for us really well. Sorry. And we have our, again, we wanted, I I think we need to provide predictability to our staff and a window. So we are looking at through Saturday, just behaving as though weather continues to be the emergency that it is today. So in Upper County, we're trying to coordinate our resources up there, sort of share them between Family Medicine Cleo and Urgent Care. Urgent Care also does not have a generator. Family Medicine Cleo does have a generator. So those conversations were coordinating. We also reached out to Medic One. I talked to Jeff Shear this afternoon to make sure he understood that if there's a emergency, if their urgent care is probably, well, urgent care closed early tonight, but resources are just going to be very thin and Medic One is ready to go. They had everybody out on calls at the time, but I know they're working with Rhonda on some medication deliveries for some of our hospice patients and things like that. So Upper County, we're trying to make sure they don't get neglected in this. We, Mandy Weed went out and I think secured the last 20 hotel rooms in the city of Ellensburg. So when we get staff here from Yakima or from out of town, we're providing accommodation to the staff that that needs it in order, again, to be ready and refreshed for the next shift the next morning. So, and Mandy, how many people have we had take advantage of that?
I think six. I actually just got a text. There was two that were supposed to get here on a shuttle tonight from Yakima and the shuttle did not pick them up. But I'm still receiving texts as we're having this meeting. So I think they're going to fill up.
And and Mandy said that it was a timely call because as she was calling, those rooms were disappearing. So we set it up for two nights. Hopefully, if we need some of these rooms for a couple more nights, we'll go ahead and do that. Supply, of course, with the paths closed, we're all a little stressed about critical supplies. We have pharmacy working closely with nursing on some saline issues that we may have, although that's out there a little bit. So everyone's coordinating that. Materials management will be in and helping us manage critical inventory levels. And our food thankfully comes from Spokane. So we're continuing to have food delivers from Spokane. So all of you who are on IC, what am I missing? Michelle, anything?
No, I, you you cover it. And I, they all see, I just sent out the all user update, so they'll have more details on that as well.
Staff's pretty, pretty darn proud of themselves, the way they they pivoted to help with this. And, you know, everyone, one of the reasons our ambulatory, the status of our ambulatory clinics is so important is we are stretched super thin in environmental services. So if we don't need, you know, if if our clinics can empty their own garbage, we can keep the environmental services here. Jim Gallagher from Dietary did a circuit around Ellensburg, picked up all his staff and his four wheel drive and and brought them into work this morning. So people just really going above and beyond. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions or anybody else here. Oh, COVID testing was shut down today. We will have limited hours for COVID testing tomorrow. I think we decided on 10 to three. So to the degree that we can get people who are going to be leaving the facility on the road before dark, we're going to try to do that. And included in Michelle's update, situational update that just went out to all users, is weather report that's not at all promising. So we're looking at wind, we're looking at at freezing rain and more snow. Not happy notes.
I have a question. Go ahead.
I just wanted to remind Michelle to please forward that to Hospital District Two Commissioners as well. Thanks.
Speaking of District Two, just thinking about the roads between Upper County and the hospital. I know that when I've seen past, past closures before, there's, you know, barricades over the onramps from going westbound, but is travel inhibited from Upper County coming down this way? Or can people still get on the freeway? Is the freeway clear? Does anybody know what that looks like?
Oz, we're operating on 90 coming east from above exit 106 this afternoon. But on the 106 on ramp westbound was barricaded. The alternate route is 97. So the interstate isn't the only connection between Upper and Lower Counties. How good a job they do at maintaining 97, I don't have data on.
Dr. Martin, do you have an update on ground transport, transfer and air transfer?
We were able to transfer a patient to Yakima earlier this afternoon. That's the first patient that we've been able to transfer out of the hospital for about three days. We have been advised that as long as Bowers Field is open and the runway is clear, we can get fixed wing transport. Rotors are more sensitive to weather. We do, we established today have a heated helipad, which I'm not, I can't figure out why my office isn't warmer. I'm right under. But but in conditions like we were having tonight, helicopters can't operate. If the rotors that we have available don't have de-icing capacity. And so they're susceptible to freezing. We are still theoretically able to transfer patients by ground to Spokane, but that A is going to tax R E Ms tremendously and B, we haven't been able to find a bed in Spokane for days.
I, I heard a report this morning that the trauma center in North Idaho is on divert and so, so Spokane's picking up those patients.
Correct, so that makes level. Correct. So that makes Level Two Trauma Center in Spokane the regional resource.
Fabulous staff stepping up again. And nobody can overstaff. So as many clinical staff and support staff that we can get in, we're going to continue to bring them in and as long as they can travel safely and then hopefully we'll keep them local so that they can show up and support us. And I do believe we have seven extra beds for surge, Vicky.
Yes, we can go up to 15 on med surge even more than that if we have to, and then keep the unit full with our current staffing, at least for the next two days. So, yeah.
And we, we plopped our general surgeon on Hobert so that she's available to the emergency department at the drop of ad as well. Thank you. Dr. Martin moved her in there, I think, so. Any questions about that?
I didn't actually move her, right?
That was Ron's job, probably. Any questions?
I just want to express immense gratitude for the staff for, I mean, here I am. It didn't have to be anywhere today and I'm in a little panic that I can't get out of my driveway or anything, but I mean, people are just still making it happen amidst pandemic, amidst the snowmageddon. It's just incredible. I'm not surprised because they do it time and time again, but incredibly grateful.
It's, it's, I mean, it truly is amazing. So, and, and I, you know, incident command is worth watching because it's, it's just really a shotgun assignments and teams coming together to answer questions and coordinate. And we've got the right people there. They're experts. And they do what they do so well. So. And I think unless you have questions from my report, that's, that's it.
Any, any other questions for Julie? All right. Thank you, Julie. Operations, beginning with Vicky.
One quick question. Did, did Amanda have anything to say about her part of the report? Amanda, did you want to add anything to the human resources stuff?
Um, not specifically, but thanks for asking. You will see Julie's note about the perk decision and Teamsters negotiation. So we have been notified of that and we are working with our representative. We have a great relationship with our, with our Teamsters representatives. So we'll have more information as we evolve through the bargaining process with that additional group.
Okay. And can you speak to the incentives a little bit?
Yeah, definitely. We actually have a draft to extend the incentives as well. And unfortunately, our WSNA rep has been caught up this week in the travel mess as well. So I haven't been able to connect with her as I was hoping to do, but I, by plan to tomorrow. She said she was free, but we are reviewing the incentives plan. It was very tricky the way we did it, just because we were looking at just each pay period and each kind of scheduling period in terms of whether or not we're going to extend the incentives. And that just got really challenging for us to manage and for the staff. And of course, we didn't, we hoped that the new year would bring a little bit of a different of a staffing pattern, but we, we decided that we really need to take more of a long-term strategy. So we are working on an incentives plan that will cover all of 2022. A negotiated memorandum of understanding with WSNA, and then we'll be working with Teamsters and our other staffing groups as well. And that will look at a quarterly basis rather than kind of a scheduled period. It was just too chaotic. So more to come on that. We're going to be working with our members on that. Thank you to Vicky and the nursing directors. They put a ton of work in that, too. We've gotten some feedback, you know, along the way, people are very thankful for it, but there was just some real logistical scheduling challenges that we just kind of needed to shore up with that. And so we're, we're excited for where we're headed with that to extend that on more of a long-term solution. And the quarterly basis will be evaluating and we'll be have worked into that MOU that if we don't have those staffing needs that quarter, that we won't, we won't be needing that. But again, this is all what we're discussing in, right now with our, with our union partners and nothing fully approved yet.
Quick question, Amanda. On the employee turnover rate is higher this last year at a certain sec of that we're seeing more, or is it just across the board, you know?
You know, it's kind of just more of the same hard recruit areas. There are certain clinics, MAs are really hard. So, and so that's one area. Environmental Services, that was an area, but we're in a little better shape of that. But that was, that was a difficult area for a little while. So it's kind of our, our standard areas that are pretty, pretty hard to fill. Clinic nurses were really hard to fill as well. What we've done in HR is a few different strategies you'll see in my report. We're really trying to hit in-person exit interviews, really, really catch those people to get their feedback when they're leaving. And we haven't always been able to do that for every single person leaving the organization, but that's a real priority for us. Just getting feedback from people who are coming into the organization and leaving on what we can do. We're really excited about our compensation philosophy. I think we talked about it with our Teamsters group, but we really carried some of that philosophy with all of our different groups and really kind of just are really trying to make sure we stay competitive in market, but also retain and continue to focus on the staff development efforts and everything that we talked about in our strategic plan, which really aligns to the employee experience. So thank you.
Hey, you want to say something about the long-term care cat tax?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Look, I didn't think I had anything, but yeah, it just is all kind of a blur. I guess I have several things, but the long-term care was another thing that has evolved with the state. So the long-term care tax was supposed to take place on January 1st, which it did. But about a week ago, we got guidance that from, from the state and our benefits partners, we have really great consultants that there was going to be a delay. There was going to be some more legislation happening and some more rulemaking around long-term care. So first our guidance was actually to not collect the premiums from our staff. So we communicated that out, then quickly got some completely shift on the guidance and said that yes, we should be collecting that. And so that we will be ready to pay that premium and that we don't think the long-term care tax is going to be going away, just delayed. So anyways, staff have not been, we have gotten a lot of questions on that. It has been very confusing. It's been confusing for everybody. We're continuing to kind of just match the state of involvement. So you might hear about that in the community or from other staff. It was, it's anyways, just a frustrating situation because we thought we might not have to collect them. And then we did end up having to collect them after all. Luckily, we helped facilitate a really great alternative plan for staff with, it was through WIT, one of our partners, and it was a trust mark plan. So there are people who've been able to, we had an open enrollment in the fall and they were able to get an alternative plan for that. So there are some folks that are, that were able to get exempt from that. I will also say that we've hit an unfortunate delay from the state PEB plan transition as well. It, it was a very manual process and there was no real delay on the HR end. We sent those forms in by, by snail mail as soon as we got them in packs of 75 and went and did runs to the post office every, every day, basically. But the state is just really behind in processing those. And so there are some, some upset staff coming to.
That's the perk or the PEB enrollment?
The PEB, yeah. So it's just been a little bit more delayed. So we did put the benefits information out there. So people have access to it. But people expect to get their cards before they get their medical appointments and prescriptions and everything. So that's been another kind of state coordination thing that we've been working on as well.
Before we move on, I would just like to jump in and talk a little bit about COVID testing and COVID positivities. We have been our, our busiest days to date have been within the last two weeks and there's eight or nine of them of the top days for total testing within our system have occurred just very recently. And you, if you read the article from Public Health that was in the daily record, you know that positive, that we have a lot of positives and, and we're seeing, we saw 99 yesterday. We saw 97 positives today, 81 on, on January 1st. So a lot of positives and each and every one of those people is getting a call. So the positives and the negatives. So I think, Mandy, that, that we had 360 results, we called, I think, one day this week and Kyle's doing a wonderful job of guilting all of us in the helping with those calls. So.
And I just want to point out that the 99 positives were KVH testing. The county case count yesterday was 160.
I'd like to make a comment about the COVID clinic. I have an opportunity to call them numerous times each week in my course of, of work. And every single time without exception, people who answer the phone there and help me out are positive cheerful. I know they're under an immense amount of stress, but they don't show it at all. Always very helpful. And hearing about opposite side of the state, how difficult it is to find testing over there and the criteria is really being tightened down on who can receive testing. I just think we're doing great things here and I'm just so proud of our organization in our county and what we have accomplished and continue to accomplish. Are there any other questions for Julie?
Now I'm done, I promise.
All right, Vicky, you're up.
Okay, um, my report is there. I, pretty much everything I was going to add has already been discussed. Mostly about the staffing. We, we were, I, I'm not sure if I put in my report or not. We were, are, are able to procure some agency RN staff specifically for our OR. And I think there's two coming to ED and one to, to ICU and one, two to ICU and one to med surge. So there is been a little bit of wiggle room with the agencies. And so we're, we're kind of excited about that. We also have made some movements about filling some permanent positions. There's been more applicants applying in the last month than there has previously, but we're still, still have a lot of empty positions. Staff have been great about working extra and helping out. Like Amanda said, we're working on MOU to, to kind of hone in on getting some of the issues around the stipends cleared up. So hopefully that'll be defined clearly next week because we need to do it before payroll on the next Monday. Any questions at all?
All right. Thank you so much, Vicky.
All right, thank you.
And it is, Rhonda is not with us due to power outage. Any discussion about Rhonda's report?
All right. I, I would just report that as far as home health and hospice are concerned, I think it's fair to say that staffing continues to be at a crisis level in that department. April Grant is getting a drink from a fire hose. She, she says she has no idea what the stress of being a manager is because she's out in the field taking care of patients. So doing a great job up there, but it's continues to be very stressful. And we did reach out to the Kidde Task County Health Network to see if they have some community health workers or some other folks that they can help get out to homes and help us support that patient population.
Additionally, we have two traveling RNs that will be starting in that, in home health hospice this month.
In December, hospice had their highest number of referrals as well for hospice since 2019. And the, the same for home health, but they, they've had to unfortunately turn away, I think it was 19 patients in December due to staffing.
What happens to hospice eligible patients when they're turned away? Do they? What, do they just stay home, not receive services? Is that the unfortunate consequence?
So.
Sometimes they. Oh, sorry.
So when we're talking about hospice, there's a couple of different pieces. The first is symptom management. Sometimes those patients wind up admitted to hospital for symptom management. Other times, if the symptoms are less refractory, the PCP can write medications for comfort. The hospice benefit also includes things like social work to help make sure that the things that need to be in order are in order. Chaplaincy, somebody to meet you where you are and advocate for you in your final time. And bath aids. And those aren't available if we can't admit to hospital, hospice.
So does any breakdown in anyone's staffing? Role?
It's nurse, nurse case managers. The initial assessment has to be done, but for hospice has to be done by a nurse. And if the patient is being admitted to home health for a skilled nursing need such as wound care, that assessment also requires an RN.
So Dr. Martin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are erring on the side of hospice. Is that correct?
Correct. We are, we are preferentially, we're delaying home health admissions when we can and preferentially trying to meet hospice. Because the other, the other piece of this, as we see more referrals, we're still seeing a lot of late referrals. So hospice is, is a benefit that's intended for the last six months of life. And a lot of that team approach involves teaching families and patients about what to expect and normalizing it so that they aren't frightened when they see changes in breathing. But we get a lot of late admissions, especially from this, from hospital. The patient that just got a terminal diagnosis and is just discharged and survives 36 hours. Even in the best of times, those can be challenging to get staff in. And when we're short-staffed, sometimes we don't.
All right. Thank you for the explanation for that. Appreciate that. All right. Any other comments regarding Rhonda's report? All right, Carrie, Carrie Barr.
Hello, everybody. So I am, my report is on page 33 and I just wanted to highlight just that first item there, particularly since the discussion was around just earlier, as Amanda was saying around turnover rates and making sure we have retention. One of the things I had put in my report last month was we had pulled together MAs and PSRs and had the discussion about retention and what it is that they love about their position. What are some things that they'd like to see change? And training came up as a number one item. So this new position, this new position that's in my report is, is really exciting. There's been a lot of great feedback on it. This is a patient service representative development coordinator position. This person is in, responsible for competency and training of new hires as well as ongoing training for our staff. And then as of this week, we have a new position also being posted. Our MA development coordinator position that will do much of the same of, of making sure that they are training and ensuring competency of staff. Again, these were, this was the highest issue with our, with our workforce, saying this is, this is why people are leaving and this is why we, we look to leave is because we just don't feel comfortable or confident in the work that we're doing. So this provides that structure. So we're really excited about this. Passion has just hit the ground running. And so we're thrilled about, about that. And we're looking forward to this, like I said, the same type of position, but for medical assistance as well. And, and then the impact that that can, will have on turnover and retention.
At, at some point you will have an opportunity to gimbal with passion that you, not for a while, you have to reserve your energy if you're going to follow her around for a while because she is raring to go.
A couple of us did do a, a gimbal with her. You remember Carrie? Where was that?
That was general surgery, wasn't it?
General surgery and vascular, and she was still shy and reserved. She is now in her element. And she is, she is leading people and it is a sight to see.
Totally.
So I will take any questions on any other items you may have.
We have any questions for Carrie?
Real, real quick, the, the change on the 15 minute arrival early. Do you think it's going to be hard to retrain people? So, so basically if you have an appointment at 10 AM now, as long as they're in the lobby ready to check in at 10 AM, they're, they're on time. Is that the way this new procedure would work?
Yes, one, one time. That's all patients are given. The training really is our staff. And so that was, that was. And so that was, that was the, our, our hurdle was thinking, wait a minute, we can't train. You know, all of the patients, we need to be training our staff of, of what this looks like. So this removes the confusion. I, I agree with you though, John. I think there's a there's going to be a habit for us patients who have always come in fifteen minutes early. And so that will just, that will continue, but we're removing it from text messages, voicemails, things like that. So so hopefully it will, it will work its way out, but it's exciting.
Definitely. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Carrie. Next up, we have medical staff with Chief of Staff, Dr. Timothy O'Brien. Are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Presumably you can hear me. We have a fairly limited list this month of appointments and reappointments, three initial appointments and three reappointments. And then one additional privilege. With this new virtual committee website, are you all able to access and use that successfully?
It's the slickest thing ever.
Yeah, it works well.
Yeah, I'm amazed. I never thought I'd say I preferred electronic versus paper, but I do. It is very cool. Anyway, yeah, we have there was one question that Matt brought up about Kevin Simonlick. Dr. Hibbs had done the initial review, being that that's a RPG hospitalist. And, and Dr. Hibbs had some lengthy concerns that he wrote in there. Shannon and I went back and looked at his actual experience, which you can find by just when you log into his name and open his file, you go to files and then you can see what his experience is over the last two years. And he has a very large amount of experience in the things that Dr. Hibbs was concerned about. Dr. Hibbs had thought he only had nine respiratory managements and in fact, he had about fifty. So just to put that concern at rest, the MEC looked into that and is recommending that he be approved his initial appointment with privileges as requested without any qualifications. Then there's there's two family medicine Ellensburg allied health professionals, as you could see from your list. And then Kevin Martin is up for reappointment. Kristen Reisenauer, ONRAD radiologist in Arnold Conla, Family Medicine Ellsberg, Illide Health Professional. We're recommending that the board approve all these applications as requested along with the privileges requested.
I, I just want to say for the, I want to, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say for the record, I appreciate that Dr. Hibbs, you know, pointed out something he was concerned about and yet had a chance to look at it more thoroughly. I, I, I just want to make sure that he understands that his notes are very much appreciated. So.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I agree a hundred percent. I, I think he just wasn't familiar with how to operate the system fully yet.
I'll be happy to pass it on, John. Thank you. Yeah, and Dr. O'Brien, I agree, we're all, the system's new for all of us. I'm sure we'll work some kinks out, but yeah, no, it's, other than that, it's, it's great to have access to all those digital files. So thank you.
It is wonderful. Yeah. And then Dr. Hoppy, cardiologist, is asking for additional privilege that wasn't initially granted, which is for deep sedation. We looked into that in depth and her experience in that realm is massive. At a very high level hospital in Minneapolis and obviously qualified. So we recommend that she be approved for deep sedation privileges as well. We, we have well, we have a standard work for her procedures where there's a respiratory therapist present, there's an a nurse, you know, and all the help available needed to do a deep sedation procedure. So we're recommending that that privilege be granted to her. That's all I've got.
Well, I would, I would move to approve the credential files for this month.
Put a motion on.
Second.
Add a second from Bob. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Right. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Dr. O'Brien.
Thank you.
Dr. Martin, Chief Medical Officer.
My report begins on page thirty-seven. I have more comment than usual, unfortunately. The first is that I commented on a family medicine APC that we had made an offer to. You just approved her privileges and that's kept to Chulkey. I completely omitted that we have begun reexamining the values alignment committee work that we did.
Down. Down on line twenty-eight.
Scott, can, can I interrupt you for just one moment? Now that we're, we are recording again, just for anybody who's watching this at a later date recording, we've reached some technical difficulties and recording did stop for a little bit. We are back on now. And if you have questions about what transpired when recording was down, you can find that in the minutes. Thank you.
So just the, lot of, just very positive variances related to clinic visits and just all of the statistical drivers of, of revenue for KVH. And then just down on the, on the last line on this page is, we'll see it later, but days cash on hand grew for the organization by about fourteen days over the prior month. So just with these statistical variances, just a positive financial result for KVH. I'm going to drop down two pages to page forty-five. And you can see the see the impact of these, of the statistical variances. We had positive inpatient revenue of five hundred fifty-two thousand, outpatient revenue of one point four million. Professional fee primarily clinic revenue of three hundred and almost seventy-seven thousand. Um, the, the mix of revenue is because of the high patients census on the floors is, is driving hi- higher reimbursing services for KVH. And so the contractual adjustments that you see is a, is a minus, but it's a positive, it is being a positive variance because we're recording a lower contractual adjustment than we had, had expected. With down in other operating revenue line, it's below budget and it's, we do not have, the pharmaceutical companies are being very stringent about what they are allowing for be, for three forty B eligible drugs. They're reducing, reducing the, a number of eligible drugs all the time. And so that is an unfortunate trend that we will see through December and also into the two thousand twenty-two. On the expenses for the month, we had a, an overall negative variance of three hundred and ten thousand dollars more expenses than budget, but it was all, it was all volume-related expenses. So we ended up posting an operating income for the month of November of one point seven million dollars. And year-to-date, we're looking at eleven point eight six million dollars. Would like to talk about some of the drivers of, you know, we're, we're, we're going to have a very positive bottom line for the two thousand twenty-one. And the reasons, the reasons for that. And if, if you go up to on the year-to-date line, on the year-to-date line, on the third line down, total revenue, we have twenty-one point eight million dollar positive revenue variance for the organization. With that, that is a, it's almost a fourteen percent positive revenue variance. And that additional revenue is, is driving a fairly significant portion of our bottom line. KVH is reimbursed at a rate of about fifty, fifty-five cents on the dollar for all, on average, for all of the care we provide. So if you take that twenty-one million dollars and, and multiply that by fifty-five percent, that brought in an additional twelve million dollars of, of cash to the organization. But down on the expenses, you see that we had on, our expenses were over budget by five point four million dollars year-to-date on and if you, if you take that twelve million dollars less the five point four million dollars, the, the, the volume variance that we have experienced, we've, we've seen about six point five additional million of that eleven million dollars is related to the additional volume that has come into KVH. Another factor for KVH is for the very good financial results that we're having is if you look on the deductions from revenue line, we, we are with that positive revenue variance, we're collecting about three percent more on average than we had expected to, expected to collect. And that is another factor that is causing us to have a very, very good bottom line. That, that in itself with the volume variance, you can attribute about six point five million dollars to that. And then with the enhanced reimbursement, another about five point three and you get close to that eleven million dollars. And then on the, if, as you look down on the clinic line on the, near the bottom of the page and look at where in, in two thousand twenty, on average, we lost a little bit of about two point seven million dollars on our clinics. We're now losing about one point seven million dollars. And that difference is, that difference was related to rescoping our, our RHC clinics, our rural health clinics. It's also, we have, we moved family medicine or Ellensburg Pediatrics under a rural health clinic umbrella, which is, we are being paid more for the exact same work that we're doing. We moved women's health, women's health from a freestanding women's health clinic to a, under a rural health clinic umbrella. And that is, we're being paid for more of the work. And that is where you'll see that, that's, that, that's what the reason we're having less of a loss on the clinics and don't get me wrong, when, when we lose, all hospitals lose money on physician practices. That is normal. But we have, we have come up with ways to minimize those losses on the practices. So there's, that's, that's in a nutshell, the, the reasons we are having an exceptional, exceptional year for, for the organization. And I'll go to one, I'll just go back to one other page, just on the financial dashboard.
Yeah, comment on the clinics too.
Please, Jason.
That, that rescoping kind of back to a comment earlier on the financial strategic plan of cost sharing for members, the rescoping of the clinics, that added about a million dollars every year to the three RHC clinics from just Medicaid. So Medicaid and RHCs, they see about sixteen thousand Medicaid encounters per year. And that added one million dollars of revenue receiving. None of that comes out of our patients' pocket. That all comes from the state. They have zero cost share. And that is something that, that we visit a lot and consider when we're targeting rate increases or targeting contracts or this one targeting the state to maximize our reimbursement.
Thank you. On the financial dashboard page, you can see just the, we are, our days and accounts receivable trended up a little bit for the month. We had some certainer challenges that impacted some of the, what we were able to post in, in November. I can tell you that in December, our overall AR is going to drop about one point six million dollars. December was a very, very good collection month for the organization. And then under the cash and investments, you can see that we're at almost two hundred thirty days cash on hand right now. And so this just positive trends across the board for KVH for year-to-date and for the month of November. And I, I will foreshadow a little bit of what we will see in, with December. December revenue is coming in about, without the accrual at about sixteen point eight, we may break seventeen million. And that will be the third or fourth best revenue month for the year of two thousand twenty-one. So December appears to be a very strong month. The stats that we're seeing that Jason's pulled already. Our patient days are up again for inpatient patient days and just volumes throughout the organization are very, very high. So I I expect to have a, a positive financial result for the month of December. I would like to ask for a little, little bit of grace for the month of December. We normally send out the the financial packet before the finance committee meeting and the, the board. And with December being a December final year end, we'd like to keep the accounts payable open longer and give the accounting staff some additional time to, to review the, the general ledger and make sure that we have everything correct. A, a quick close, you, when you, when you do a quick close, you do more estimates. If you have a, if you have additional time, you can actually wait for the invoices to come in. And so if you, if with, if with your forgiveness, I'd like to probably send out the, just the financial report of the December report later than we would normally, if that's all right.
I certainly support that.
Sounds reasonable if my fellow commissioners are okay with it. Yep.
Okay. Any, any questions about November financials?
Also in November, I think it's noted in your write-up there, we received a, a second round or third round of the CARES funding. So we received another long sum from HHS that we're working with.
We are. That, that, it was, we received about two million, twenty-seven thousand dollars in November and, and another two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars in December. Those numbers are not reflected in the November financials. Okay, let me move. If there's no questions, let me move. We have a surplus property, there's a surplus property resolution and man, Mandy sent out a revision to this. We had, we had two Toshiba machines that we are disposing of that we didn't know which ones they were and Stacy Alea was not, she was on vacation. We've confirmed with Stacy and the, the value of the Toshiba ultrasound machines was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. They are fully depreciated. So the full amount that we are asking for the board to be, declare as surplus equipment is, is two million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. And I, you've got the list of any questions about any of these pieces of equipment.
So this is a, a very large catch-up. You can expect to see surplus resolutions with most monthly board packets in much, much smaller numbers than this.
So how do we get rid of this stuff? Does the, is there like a secondary, like scrap folks that come get it? Or how do you?
Some of it is sold, Bob, and S- s- some of it is sold, Bob, and, uh, to, uh, you can see on the, uh. The hematology analyzer, we sold some of it for about five hundred dollars. We may be able, there, there is, there is a surplus equipment vendor that we reach out to. And, uh, if the equipment has value, we try to work with them and they will. Uh, perhaps sell the equipment for us, we, we do everything possible to, to minimize, to, uh. But s- some of this is, is, is just obsolete and, um, it needs to be scrapped.
Yeah.
So I think there's a resolution in the, in the board packet that, uh. Questions, concerns?
Twenty-two dash zero one surplus property.
Yep.
Motion for that resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Bob. Second?
Second.
I'll second.
It's all right, let's, uh. It's all right, I don't need to second it, uh, let, uh.
Heard two of you at the same time, so John?
Yeah, John.
Matt, Matt, Matt's welcome to second, it's one of us.
No, that's all right, uh, you're, you're on the committee, so John, uh, it's good.
Yeah.
All approved, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Right, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much, and then the last item for me is the, uh. Is the two thousand two twenty-two, uh, budget for the organization. And, um, there's a, uh, a budget narrative that goes with this. I, first off, I just want to thank, um, all of the, uh, the leaders at KVH. Um, Jason and I met with everybody via, uh, via Zoom. And these, um, the, the budget was developed by base, basing the, using the statistical measures that we. Use to track revenue and growth and, um, and, uh, the, the managers and directors and, uh. Vicky and Rhonda and their staff, they all had input into these numbers and basically bought off on these numbers. So if you, I'm on page fifty-three of fifty-eight now, and these are the, uh. These are the, uh, statist, in the last column, these are the statistical drivers for. The, the, the revenue budget that we had, we have developed. It is a, um. The, we believe that, uh, we're going to continue to grow. Uh, we had significant growth in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we don't believe, we're not budgeting to grow at the same rate, we're trying to be cautious and conservative. And, uh, in the, uh, in the growth projections that we have. Uh, but you, but you still see some, some growth and you can see what, uh, that growth in, um. On admissions, on line one, we're, uh, some additional admissions, we're, we're trending about nine hundred and twenty-two admissions. We've got, we're budgeting for nine hundred and forty-six. We're actually, um, budgeting a decrease in patient days on line two. Um, we, we've had a, Vicky's med surgeon ICU department has been full of COVID patients. Uh, in the year and that's reflected in that higher, that thirty-five hundred and sixteen patient day number. Um, hopefully, we're, when we put this budget together, the, uh, we were trending down with COVID. And, um. Uh, but we wanted to be conservative in the budget at the time and, and we're given what, you know, we've got three COVID patients in the hospital now. Um, but this is, uh, we, we assumed that we would not be as busy with COVID, uh, in the inpatient unit. Um, we're, I continue to be optimistic on surgeries. Uh, Stacy Button and her team do such a good job with, uh, bringing new, uh, moms and babies into the world. At some point, I think we're going to be truly at, uh, three hundred deliveries, we, we ended the year at two hundred and eighty. Or two hundred and eighty-four, let me look for two thousand. We ended up with two hundred and eighty, so we're, we're planning for a growth of, uh, twenty deliveries in, um, in two thousand twenty-two. Um, the inpatient and outpatient surgery case numbers, there's some growth there. It's direct, directly related to physicians that we have. Doctor Wickham Meyer is going to increase her FTE as is Doctor Zammott. And, uh, and if we are able to, um. Not shut down for any extended length periods of time, we think we will hit these surg, these surgery numbers. Um, ER is at fourteen thousand visits is kind of our, our normal. Uh, as you look back in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, uh, that's trend, that tended to be what we were at. Twenty was an aberration and we appear to be trending at that fourteen thousand ER visit level. And, uh, same with, um, same with urgent care. Uh, where we expect to be at fifty-two hundred and then lab tests. We're still doing a lot of, a lot of lab work with the lab expansion that we have. We think we will, um, continue to, uh, have a high volume, a high number of lab tests. We are actually anticipating a slight decrease in lab tests, just to be conservative. Uh, but, uh, I, that's, that trend is already seems to be at odds with what we're currently experiencing. Um. Clinic visits, um. We think our overall visit will be pretty much flat. Jason, would you explain kind of how we, philosophy on how we, uh, budget for, um, uh, clinic visits? And, uh, why we do it the way we do?
Yeah, it, we kind of changed our philosophy, how we were doing it, starting in twenty twenty with the provider alignment committee. So most of our visits are primary care based, we have a new primary care compensation model. In that model, a small piece of their compensation is based on meeting the clinic meeting budget. So, um, the clinic meets budget, it doesn't feel like that should be the basis for the next year is their new. Actuals, rather we kind of reset that to their expectation set by the, the provider alignment committee. Rather than increasing the expectation every year for the clinic's overall performance. So each individual provider has their expectation as a percentage of median to MGMA benchmarking. And we use that to rather set the budget and the, the goals for the clinic.
Bottom line, we will, we likely will exceed that, uh, clinic visit bar target. Um, our physicians are, are very productive and, uh, and, and motivated to see patients.
Yeah, we, we have some providers that'll see a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty percent of their expectation. And then the budget kind of resets that back to an expectation of meeting hundred percent exactly at their expectation.
So this, this is the, uh, the, the final, uh. Budget, revenue expense budget, we're, uh, we're looking at a total of two hundred and nine million dollars in, in gross charges. On the, uh, on the expenses, we're, uh, looking at a total of, uh, one, one hundred and seven million. Eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in expenses. Um, I'll go back and talk a, a little bit in more detail about some of the salaries and, um. Um, that we are anticipating, um, but we have, um. One thing that, that the narrative points out is we will be having a, um. Having to record a, a liability related to the public employees benefit, the, the new benefit plan that the hospital is on. And it is a non-cash entry, but it does hit our bottom line. So we're budgeting for an overall operating income of six point five million dollars. If, when we book that, that liability, it will, it will, i- it may be six million dollars, it may be eight million dollars. But that will cause the operating income that we would report to be a negative number. And when we get, when and if we leave the PEB, we would reverse that entry and, uh. And it would come back in as, uh, an offset to, so anyway, it. We've got a budget and operating income of six point five million dollars. If we book a PEB adjustment of six million dollars, are, that, that will drop to, um, a five hundred thousand dollar operating income. But it is a non-cash entry and is not, it does not impede KVH's ability to borrow. That, to, to get access to funds via the debt market or, um, any of, uh, our, or overall operations. It is a. So let me, let me just go back to the narrative a little bit, if I.
We, we also did, did not include, because we didn't know it did at the time of the, during the budget, any. Um, recognizing the funds for the additional cares funds we just received in November, that two, about two point three million dollars. Will likely be recognizing that in twenty twenty-two and that would likely be a non-operating revenue as well.
Yep.
So can I just jump in for one second, Mandy, we just updated us that, uh, from here to North Bend is supposed to be closed through Sunday now.
Through Sunday?
Until Sunday.
Okay, wow, still, wow, thank you.
So I've, I've talked about some of this, this statistical issues and, on the, on this, uh, the, on the statistical page. And this narrative kind of reflects, uh, what, what you were looking at with that. Um, the. We're not anticipate, you know, you know, there, there are additional programs that were being considered. An expansion of cardiology services, perhaps some urology services, um, uh, oncology services. That we did not factor any additional revenue or expense related to those services in the budget. So this is, uh, kind of existing operations as they are. Um, we are quite conservative in what we're doing, you know, we have a great grant writer, uh, Mitchell Rhodes. Um, you don't know when their, when your, the grants will come or if they will come. So we have intentionally not included, uh, uh, very much grant revenue in our budget, just to be conservative. But we fully expect, uh, Mitchell, uh, generated about, about over three, three million dollars in grant revenue for. KVH or KCHN or District Two this last year. I am, he, I am optimistic that he will continue to do that, but we did not, we didn't want to factor that into our, our budget. We're assuming, we're assuming that our case mix is going, or our, our, not a case mix, but our payer mix. Is going to continue to be the same as it is. We're at about fifty-nine point five percent Medicare and Medicaid revenue and, uh, thirty-five percent commercial. Uh, two and a half percent self-pay and three percent other, other is L and I, it's veterans, uh, champus. But we assume that our payer mix is going to continue to be the same. One of the things that we have, um. We've been, you know, Matt's comment earlier about being sensitive to patients out of pocket payments. We've, we've intentionally tried to keep our charge master increases less than the five percent that our commercial payers allowed in previous years. But, uh, we, with all of the uncertainty, with the labor market, with supply chain. We felt like we needed to, to do a full five percent average, uh, charge master increase, uh, in this budget. And that is what is reflected in the, in, in the, in the budget. Um, and this will, uh, this will yield about, uh, initial three and a half, three point nine million dollars.
Oh, um. I mean, that's because you're, you're planning for worst-case scenario, is that why? Or sort, just to help me wrap my head around that number, how you, how you settled on that?
We, we kind of match it to our, our, what we see in inflation. So I, I expect we will see five percent or more in our inflation costs. Our, our salaries alone are probably over five percent this year in total with market adjustments. But it, it just matches inflation and I believe we're still less than healthcare in general. For Washington, I know when actually this had a huge discrepancy with Primera. But they resolved, resolved and was a, a large inflation increase.
When, Matt, we had, um, we've, you know, we've, we've actually, uh, last year, I think we were at about two and a half, three percent average. Charge master increase and, um, we, we had hoped to talk with the payers about, uh. Um, you know, if, if, because we were, we didn't increase our charge master, will you pay, pay us our, on our professional fees a little bit more? And we get, they, they, they give us absolutely no credit at all for keeping our charge masters low. Or trying to minimize, w- w- the, the five percent number is a, uh, it's written into the contract that. Our, we won't, we won't exceed that, but, um. And, and the last two years, we've been less than that and, uh, but this is, there's just a lot of. I don't know if any budget, i- i- it just, there's just a lot of uncertainty, Matt, and that it just felt like we needed to. Make sure we have sufficient resources and if you don't, if you don't do the increase, if we didn't do five percent, if we did a, a three percent. And then we try to come back with a seven percent next year, the payers would not allow it, we, we, we're capped at five.
No, I, I get it. It's, uh, I mean, you, you have a. About a hundred, you know, a hundred, maybe a thousand times better grasp of this stuff than I do, so, um, pardon my ignorance here. But you know, we've just been talking about, uh. How like we, I mean, uh, the, we've had sort of the, several of the best months that we've ever had at KVH last, uh. Last year and, and, you know, revenue-wise and, um, I'm just, as a, as a sort of public official, I'm sort of wondering how I would. Um, how I would explain this to people, um, I mean, I can talk about uncertainty and everything, but, uh, but what they see is. Us going gangbusters financially and then coming back and saying we need to sort of do the maximum increase. I don't, I, it's just a little hard for me to wrap my mind around it, uh, again, it may have to. I understand we need to be careful and we don't want to, um, put ourselves at risk, but it's just as a, as a sort of layperson. It's a little hard to.
Matt, let me, let me add a little context, because we discussed this, uh, in the finance meeting. Um, as Scott noted, we've not gone for the maximum the last couple of years and that's put us a little bit behind. I think where they feel comfortable, um, with all these additional expenses that we're incurring. And I think the more important thing that came out of that discussion is, th- this is really what we charge the insurance company. So it maximizes what we can get from the insurance companies. And to me, that will give us some freedom to what the payer has left, their shares. We discussed these, you know, potential options, things we're thinking about. You know, the more we maximize from the insurance companies, the more freedom we'll have for the, what's left to be paid from, from the citizens of this community. And Scott or Jason, if I misspeaking, please let me know, but that's kind of my takeaway from our discussion.
John, you're, you're, you're correct in that, i- 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 it maximizes what we can get from the payers, but. The, i- i- it does impact individuals also, you know, there it, the, the out-of-pocket, it's, it's, you know, patients have and. They, it impacts patients too, but lo- lo- backing up just a little bit to where that, when we were talking about November financials results. You know, we've had a, a very, very good year, but, you know, I can tell you, six point five million dollars of that very, very good year. Is directly related to huge volume, better than volume, better than budget increases that we've had. With, we're not, we will not have that, I, I don't think we will have that kind of growth again, Matt. And, and so that, you know, so, you know, we're going to, you know, we're, uh. You know, we're going to probably end this year with a thirteen, fourteen million dollar bottom line. But right off the top, because of, I, I'm, I'm losing that growth right off the top, you know what I mean? Because we're, so, so that's why, you know, we're moving from a fourteen million dollar line, bottom line to about a six and a half million dollar bottom line. Because that, we, we're just not expecting that growth to, to continue at that rate.
When we, when I start the budget, kind of one of the very first things that I look at is the CPI index for. Um, all, all goods and services for rolling twelve months, so that's always my starting point for inflation for. So that's always my starting point for inflation, for both the charge master and for our cost of living adjustments and step increases and market share. Julie and Amanda always, they, they're looking at how much they have for market adjustments for the year. And we, we looked at that C P I and see how much we can reasonably go. And C P I through July, when we look, it's always a rolling twelve month through July when I start the budget. It was five percent and that was, that was our starting point as one tool. The other tool was all those conversations we've had with the, the insurance companies. Primera, Blue Cross, Regions Blue Cross, the biggest commercial ones that this would hit. And we were trying to work out a deal with them for them to pay a little bit better on professional fees. Instead of, rather than facility, the trade-off, we would hold facility charges lower. They would pay pro fees higher, because we kind of did a market comparison. And we're looking that we're being reimbursed about forty percent less than our neighboring peers like Confluence and Memorial on professional side. So we're hoping for a market adjustment there. They denied that. And they said that, but it sounds like you also don't need five percent allowed in your contract. So we will happily adjust that to three percent. So that's how those conversations went with them. And then, and I've also asked those, those insurances, we are the only facility with my contracts that I work with that does not maximize the charge master, not that that means why we shouldn't maximize it. It was just another, another feeling for this year that we should be at that five percent. And that five percent only targets our commercial payers really out of pocket, because we are cost-based reimbursed for Medicare and Medicaid. So it targets thirty-five percent of our charges or business, basically.
Thirty-five plus the self-pay, the, the individuals that pay out of pocket too.
And, and Jason, would, would you say this five percent is less than the inflation, the rolling twelve month inflation rate currently?
So in July was the last time that I looked at the C P I and it was exactly five percent. And I believe that August and September, I think, ticked up to six percent for those months. So it would be higher now. And just, you know, watching the, or reading the Federal Reserve notes and everything for what they expect inflation to be over next year. It's, they don't, they don't expect it to be going down.
But healthcare inflation is higher than your.
Yeah.
Typical inflation.
Yeah, healthcare inflation, I think, was ten percent on July's. And we've always just used the overall, all goods and services as kind of been our starting point, one tool, starting point. Do we always tie exactly to that? No. The five percent just happened to be our contract limit and, and the C P I just happened to be exactly five percent through that July.
I, I think the area where we could help a lot of people is on the backend.
Yeah, agreed.
Especially if that goes up to three, four hundred percent of that reprieve level.
Matt, we, we really did struggle with the five percent. And it, we didn't get there, it was not an easy conversation, but we really, it felt like we, that's where we needed to end up with just all the uncertainty and what we're seeing right now in the market.
I understand. I mean, as long as we're.
We also, that, we didn't do five percent across the board. We did do some kind of by charge by department. So in my talking with Primera Blue Cross, they suggested or felt that our lab was a little bit higher than market that they would see in our area. And we did do lab at two percent. And when we reported that back to Primera, they never even said thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to belabor this. And, and I realize that you guys put a, a whole lot of thought into this and I'm just coming in here right now and just sort of asking you about it. And I realize that you, that you took it very seriously and, and thought a lot of different things. So I, I mean, it's, I'm supportive of, of what you did. And I think it's just good that we have sort of an ongoing conversation about this. Just speak, and so it isn't specifically even about this, this particular budget or anything. It's just, I think it's good to have a, an ongoing conversation, I, because, I mean, I don't, I don't want to get too, too deep into this, but there, I think that maybe in the past, and I think this predates you, Scott, but maybe in the past, there were commissioners who sort of got onto the board and were on here for twenty years and all they could sort of think about was the bottom line. And they started to kind of lose touch about the patient experience. I think it's good that we're putting that into, into our strategic plan and getting at that. I just think it's, it's good for us kind of to, to remind ourselves about how this affects, you know, out of, out of pocket costs for patients and the patient experience and things like that. So as long as we're just sort of mindful of that and thinking of that in, in these decisions. I don't, I'm not saying that you made a wrong decision. I'm sure that, that for what, what we need, it's, it's the right decision. It sounds like you guys struggled with it and, and really decided that was good. So, so no, I mean, I, I mean, no intent to, you know, that, that I oppose it or I think it's bad or anything. But I think it's just good to have this kind of ongoing conversation down the line. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I've, I've made some comments too, or some notes too on our topics. And I think, and we'll propose just amending our financial sustainability strategy and maybe adding another ideal state around it.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. I appreciate, appreciate you answering my questions. Thanks.
You're welcome. Just, just professional fees, we're expecting an increase with that. And it relates to the R P G and the, the new Royal Physician Group. And we're anticipating having an E N T locum for at least six months of the year. And then supplies, we came up with a nine point six, that, that's, I have to, I don't mind to say it's, I, I have no idea what supplies are going to look like. It's just the supply chain continues to be a mess. But at, at an almost ten percent increase, we think we're covered with supplies. We think purchase services are going to go down as we are able to do more la, as, as we have the lab expansion and are able to do more tests in-house, one will get results quicker, which will be good for our patients and our, our providers. But also, it will also lower the, the fees that we're paying for LabCorp. And we may be able to pick up some additional lab work with, with prompt resulting with, with Community Health Center Washington. Although we didn't, we didn't budget for that. Any increase of, the, what we're seeing is just the expectation, expectation that we have. Depreciation assumes we're going to spend a fair amount of capital this coming year. We don't know when everything we place into service, but we expect to continue to grow and, 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 excuse me, some of the, as with the, the decision that we made last month to purchase the Pixis machine as opposed to lease it. What that does is it moves things from a purchase services line to it down to a depreciation line. And it also with, in the case of the Pixis, we think it's going to cut our costs in half over the life of, life of the asset. So we're continuing to focus on owning assets when it makes sense as opposed to leasing. And then the interest expense that we have budgeted right now, it does not assume, i- it's, it's looking at our current debt structure. We, as, depending on the cost of the, the surgery expansion that we are considering, we may, we may go to the debt market and for some long-term debt for that capital. But the, at this point, the budget assumes that we will not. So we're just looking at our existing debt that we have. And then we're expecting some, excuse me, some additional, maybe if Omnicrom does, goes away, we, we, we did budget for some staff to do some travel and additional travel and that. It's still at a lower rate than we have in the past. There's quite a bit of growth, but it's still not at the rate we had in the past. So, and then here's the, just the overall capital. We expect to, to spend probably about, potentially from eight to ten million dollars in capital in this coming year. And, and put on the books and we know we've got the lab expansion for about three. We've got the, the, the energy efficiency project for almost the two point nine. We have the, the cafeteria renovation for about a million. And, and then just other routine capital. So we will continue to invest in, in capital to serve our community. And if, please let me know if there's, if you'd like to go to the, the, if you haven't had any additional questions for myself or Jason.
Thank you very much, Scott. This was, thank you for leading us through the summary of that. That's really helpful.
Do we need, do we need somebody to say, I make a motion to approve the budget for twenty twenty-two?
We do.
Okay, I move to approve this budget, because Scott is awesome and he has put out a great budget. So I move to approve it.
This is a team budget. This is not, this is not Scott. It's not Jason. It's, this is the whole K V H team.
Yeah, but Scott oversees them. So you are a great leader.
He's a good leader.
Motion by Terry to approve the budget.
Second.
Second from Bob. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
It's another one of those things that hours and hours of work for many, many people. And you give us a presentation over ten minutes. So anyway, we appreciate all the work that went on to get to this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we will have a fabulous budget this year. And it's because of all the work that Scott did to oversee the other people at K V H. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, I second that. Yeah, it's a pleasure to be surrounded by brilliant minds.
Do you have anything else for us, Scott?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to community relations report with Michelle World.
Hey, guys. Um, I don't have anything to add to my report. We were very, well, we will continue to be on non-COVID activities. But the emergency preparedness side of what I'm doing is obviously kind of keeping me busy right now. And I have a great team that are keeping things moving on the other side. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I would also just call out both Michelle and Ron for all the work they did in getting the ambulance station ready to go.
That was exciting. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have education and board reports. I don't see any items for education and board reports.
So we have the conference in Arizona coming up in February and it is a go for in-person. So I believe we have Bob, I know we have Matt, Bob and Terry and Matt attending and I will be going. So the next event is the H A Annual Meeting, which is in April. And again, H A is saying that that's going to be an in-person meeting. And then we get into some in-state rural and K V H specific things that are coming up in May. So.
Has there been any talk about whether Shalane will be on this year?
Shalane will not. So Shalane, there is a C E O only retreat in Shalane. They're transitioning because recognizing they truly had outgrown Shalane. They're moving that event to Walla Walla. So. We will no longer be doing the big rural meeting in Shalane is the plan. It will be done in Walla Walla going forward.
Is that on this year?
No. Walla Walla is, Walla Walla is in May.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a, I, I, I told Matt, I don't believe it. So I, I refuse to park a spot in my brain for in-person meetings with six hundred people. So.
In Walla Walla.
Yeah.
Are we still considering our own retreat in Shalane?
That's in May. And Mandy Weed, I think that's the sixteenth through the eighteenth or something. Is that right?
I, I believe so.
So, yes, and we have the Shalane booked for that.
Thank you.
I just put a, a link to a bunch of events that Wisha has, where they talk about this, including the Walla Walla thing. So.
Thanks, Matt. All right. Old business. I have an item for that. Bob and I are scheduled to meet with senior leaders for C E O evaluation tomorrow afternoon. If inclement weather prevents us from meeting, we would like to defer that meeting till later time rather than move it to Zoom. So I guess we'll go by ear and see what Mother Nature has in store for us. You have any comments about that, Bob?
Yeah, so I've been texting Mandy a little bit. Maybe she had a, maybe Tuesday at three? Since it probably will be inclement weather. Does that?
Oh, I wouldn't be able to at that time. I could an hour later at four, most likely.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll have Mandy coordinating. If tomorrow works, great. If it's a, like, nice day, I'm totally fine with tomorrow.
Is, do we want to set a time that we would decide by like ten A M. or something like that? So no one has to worry about changing their plans last minute?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll, we'll choose whether to go or not by ten. All right, new business. Any new business? All right, no new business. We'll be recessing to executive session per R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero, open, close parentheses, G, for personnel. How long do we think we need for that, Julie?
Amanda, do you think fifteen minutes will cover it?
Yeah, I do.
So it'll, it'll just be Amanda and I tag teaming on this one. And I believe Mandy Weed sent us all a fresh link for that. So it should be on six o'clock.
Yep.
All right. So you want to reconvene in five minutes?
Five minutes on the executive session link. And then we come back to this link once executive is done, because Mandy will keep this open.
That is correct.
Is there, sorry, is there action anticipated?
There is not. You want us to just close?
Then we'll just close if that works for you guys.
And the minutes will reflect that we came out of executive session and immediately adjourned the public meeting.
So we close the meeting here now. Do, do I adjourn on the other Zoom? Where do I adjourn?
Adjourn on the other Zoom and we'll just, we just record the time.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Stay safe out there.